Ready? Call the meeting to order if we can have a determination of quorum, please.
Sarah Savilecak.
Present.
Larry Chesney.
Present.
James Burns.
Here.
Thomas Bruce.
Present.
Francine Doncic.
Present.
Philip Perrin.
Here.
And Michael Lawson is absent.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Barnes, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Edwards, if you could give us the ethics announcement, please.
Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, one, you have received a gift or loan; two, you have a pecuniary interest; three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship; or four, you provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter being considered tonight. Then you must disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And you must furthermore abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it is clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you have had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lloyd, the appeals procedure, please.
All right, most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing within ten calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is signed by the Planning Commission Chair and/or the Secretary of the Planning Commission, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the Planning Staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and application fee.
And just let the record reflect that we have no public hearings items this evening, so, thank you. Do we have general public comment?
We do. Tammy Holt still.
Tammy Holt still, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee. For the record, the water's still there, we're still here. We, as you know, Lemon Valley, or Swan Lake has got red algae and other algae growing. The test had been done. They came back saying that it's not that toxic, but the way to look at it is that between Washoe County and the city of Reno, they have taken a dry lake, turned it into a wet lake without having the proper infrastructure in place to keep it as a wet lake. The water, it quality is deteriorating, and that's what's causing the algae, which the more that it deteriorates, the more toxic it's going to become. It's an environmental health hazard all the way around because when algae dries, it's airborne, and it causes trouble that way for people with respiratory issues. Also, one of the things as Washoe County Planning Commission, I would recommend going out to the Truckee Meadow Regional Planning Agency's website and go to their GIS map. It's quite interesting to see that there's over sixty-eight thousand units approved from tentative map to final in all different stages. Considering Washoe County was only supposed to have forty thousand units in a twenty-year span. So what's happening to our natural resources with this kind of thing? What are we going to do? Are we going to be out of water? We're going to be out of water and underwater at the same time? There's a lot of issues that need to be addressed before development can keep being approved and just keep moving forward. You have sewer plants, one that's in a hundred-year floodplain that expires at the end of this year, December thirty-first. You have other sewer plants that have to meet water quality to go into the Truckee River, but they're over-processing right now. So there's a lot of problems out there, and there's some major, major work that needs to be done on infrastructure, not including traffic or schools or any of that. I'm just talking the basics. Freshwater, dry lakes being dry lakes, you know, the whole thing. Sewers, everything in SARS, that type of infrastructure needs to be addressed before you guys go any further with any type of development. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
No further public comment.
Thank you. We'll close public comment. Possible action to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Chesney and seconded by Commissioner Doncic. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the August seventh draft minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Doncic and seconded by Commissioner Chesney. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're now to item eight, planning items. Mr. Lloyd, would you like to read that into the record, please?
All right. Item eight A is a presentation and possible discussion of the two thousand seventeen eighteen Truckee Meadows Regional Plan update. Presentation will include an overview of the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan update process as well as questions for additional information about the presentation. From Planning Commissioners, the item will not include any deliberations, actions, or commitments to take any actions by the Planning Commission. And representing the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency is Jeremy Smith.
Good evening. My name is Chair Commissioners, Jeremy Smith, from the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. I'm the GIS Coordinator over there. And happy to be here tonight to give you an update as to where we are in the regional plan update, which does seem like it's been a pretty long process. It's even longer to those of us that have been living it day by day. We're making some serious progress, so let's show you where we're at. Just generally, this is not the order of the presentation per se, but the stage is that we've kind of accomplished. We've outlined and we're drafting parts of the plan currently, and I'm going to show you what that outline looks like. We've done a pretty exhaustive evaluation of policies, so we can take a look at that. We're currently developing some GIS mapping scenario stuff. We're going to be able to look at impacts. I think the graphic design of the plan has come a long way. Really sort of attractive. Maybe it'll be a plan that people want to read. Be neat. And then we've got quite a bit of input gathered from public surveys. And in fact, we did re-license our MetroQuest, or the MetroQuest survey software, so we'll be anticipating to do a few more surveys coming up over the next year. Okay, so let's start with this plan outline. I'm sure that you guys have all, you know, in your spare time, looked at the existing regional plan and just really delved in.
Three of us have.
Some of you definitely have, yeah, absolutely. And, you know, it's a difficult document to negotiate. It has policies like policy one dot two dot three dot seventeen. Right? And things aren't necessarily very common sense oriented. Well, we sort of recognize that the readability is an issue. And so we've come up with this outline for the new structure of the updated plan. And it's sort of a, almost like a pyramid approach, where we want to give a summary of information at the very highest level, and then kind of have the core of the plan then exist sort of in the middle of the pyramid. At the base, all of the technical appendices and everything we did is bundled together in sort of supporting materials. And so that's really what we have here. In blue is kind of that core of the plan. And we're looking at twenty to forty pages or so for what we're calling the regional plan. That's kind of the document. It will have goals, broad goals for the region, results of the scenarios, that sort of thing. It'll be fairly graphic. It won't be super technical. But then a companion piece to that will be what we're calling the Policy Handbook. And it's really, that's about implementation for staff. So how do you implement that core document? That's where every single policy will be listed and described and sort of what the process is to go through a regional plan amendment, or, you know, if you have a question on a specific policy. And finally, the third component of the core is the TMRP work plan. And we're really trying to align the work that the agency does with the tenants of the new plan, right? So I think we recognize that our region faces a lot of unique challenges. And, you know, we have also a lot of amazing aspects to our region. But there's quite a bit to take on, and I don't think that any one document or any one update process is going to solve everything. And so we're going to try to prioritize, and we're going to get as much as we can into the updated plan version. And then our work plan is going to directly address those items that remain outstanding in the context of that plan. So that's what the work plan is really designed to do. There will also be like this fold out at the very top, the summary. Four-page, maybe eleven-by-seventeen fold out. There'll be a plan map. There'll be summary documents so folks can quickly check in with what the regional plan is trying to do. And then again, as I mentioned, the late-night reading. The vast appendices that we are writing, in the process of writing right now, will be there to support those core documents. Oh, look at that. Details to the bottom, summary to the top. Great. This is sort of the direction that the graphic design is going. You can see we have this amazing, I guess, kind of on-contract sort of intern, Shawnee Souza, who's been doing a fantastic job of kind of brightening and livening up our communications and our documents to make them more attractive. There's a hexagon theme, and I will show you why that is in just a sec. But that's kind of a technical theme we're going down. And then this is envisioning of the table of contents. We hope it will look something very similar to this for that summary regional plan document. A little bit of history. What are some of the opportunities and challenges we're facing? How do we think, you know, what are the goals? Where do we want to get and why? And then how do we implement? What are we going to do to get there? So that's kind of where we're looking as far as the plan is concerned. And so what will the plan do? Well, this is just kind of a, there was a busier slide with more text. Now we've gone to graphic. But just generally, these are kind of five things we're really focusing in on. Number one, growth. We hear about growth all the time. You know, we do the consensus forecast, for example, looking at however many folks might be coming over the next twenty-year period. So obviously, this is a plan that tries to address policy around growth and growth management. And that's, you know, straight out of the NRS. Also, we want this plan to foster coordination and collaboration among jurisdictions. I mean, we have three main jurisdictions here in this area that are going to have to deal with the growth as a region. We want to make sure folks are on the same page and that we're collaborating, that we have a common vision. Clearly, policy, and we'll get to, there's a ton of policies in there, and they have the sort of very technical names that I mentioned earlier. We're trying to cull through those and take out unnecessary policies, trying to lump things together, make the stuff more readable and more on point for what we think collectively that we actually need in the plan. And then there's the two at the bottom that I'm particularly interested in, which are scenarios. So, you know, the key here really, I think, is that if we can imagine or model what the future may be like and really look at many futures of how we might grow, then we can assess the impacts of different growth patterns before we incur them to some degree. And we will have an understanding of what a good decision versus a bad decision may be. And of course, that is validated then by measuring and tracking metrics about growth. How many units have we approved and what part of the city are they in? Are they in the Truckee Meadows, you know, or the Tom Wharf sewer shed? Or are they in the Reno Sted sewer shed? You know, there are different differential impacts. So measuring and tracking that over time in conjunction with looking at future scenarios. Those are kind of five of the key tenants to what we're trying to do with the plan. And all of it, of course, to address those regional issues and challenges and opportunities that we know are out there. So let's go into the Jeremy side of things, the scenario work, kind of the technical GIS stuff. This is what I get to oversee, basically. And over the past six, seven years since I've been working there, we've really been focused on that first bullet, buildable lands. Where can we build? Where's a vacant land? What's the zoning on the vacant land? Does it have a PUD? Does it have an active tentative map on it? Tracking all that information. What about sewer service? Is it available there? That kind of thing to try to understand where we can build and what's our liability around that. And then underneath that is suitability. And this word is not really the best word. That's why I have it in double quotes. You know, the fact that we've approved something way out on the north end of town, of our TMSA, doesn't necessarily make it more suitable, right, for development. In fact, you might think of suitability around something like it's flat or it does have the infrastructure available or can handle the traffic that will be generated. But we use it sort of as a general term to describe how we put together as much information and data as we can to describe the lay of the land, to bring that information to bear and overlay it so that we can really start to tease out what does seem like a good area to develop in versus a poor area. And also, where do we think that we have approved development? And how's, you know, how's that looking in terms of all many different items? And I'll show you some of those items in a sec here. Theoretically, now. So this is an animation. We're taking this approach, and here's where the hexagons come in. And you can just sort of watch it. Here's some roads. You can see I-80, right? And these are forty-acre hexagons. And this is just conceptual to give you an idea that the further you get from the major road, the less suitable you might be for development. You could make that case. This is another randomized one. Maybe this is density of employment or home-based employment or something. I actually have put together now with the staff over there at TMRP, we have about thirty-five to forty of these individual hexagon layers that describe these kind of development variables across the Truckee Meadows. And there's about five thousand five hundred forty-acre hexagons. So it still is quite a few discrete bits. You know, we used to do this work, and we still do and can, at the parcel level. And really, all of this, all of the work, whenever possible, is informed by the parcel information because we track everything at the parcel. But it's really difficult to visualize and kind of explain around, and it's also very slow to model on. And so we're trying this new sort of hexagon-based approach to make it a little bit more agile. We can explore many different options for the future, and that's the direction we're going. So hopefully, it won't, it'll work out. So far, so good. Every single hexagon will have this collection of information. And so there are main categories, things like land use, what's been approved, transportation, what, you know, what sort of improvements do we have, right? What's the scenario with schools? Obviously, in some cases, we might have an overcrowding issue. So we were tracking that by the hexagon. And in fact, inside each one of these, there are several variables. So for example, let's take wastewater, just throwing one out there. We've got a variable that might be distanced from major interceptors. That'd be one thing that's boiled into wastewater. We've also got treatment capacity that'd be boiled in. Connection fees is another thing that's variable by jurisdiction, so we'll put that in there. And the user, right now, the user's me, but I'm working to make this more kind of like an online tool that folks could actually mess around with, can turn the dials on these different aspects, right? And say, I'm interested in creating a scenario that's very focused around distance from the core of our community. And you could focus in on variables that we've collected and create a suitability surface out from that. And that will really help guide allocation of the future growth. And so that's the next thing is, we build this suitability concept that is obviously malleable, right? We can think about what might be suitable for our future. And then we have to, you know, accommodate some forecast of growth, which in our case, we use the consensus forecast. It's a collection of four sources. We're trying to minimize bias. And looking right now, that there's about a need for about a hundred and six, there will be a hundred and six thousand folks coming over the next twenty years. That translates to forty-three, forty-five thousand housing units, give or take, if you build in a vacancy rate. And so what we're trying to do is match the need for what's coming to the land that we have that's suitable. We're going to look at four scenarios of the future to try to do that. The first two are very familiar. They are from the housing study we did previously that was, I think, finalized in two thousand sixteen, where we looked at a historical pattern of growth, which is really quite fringy. And then we compared that to, what if we built more in the McCarran Ring and we built denser products? And could we save some money? And we found that, yes, it seemed like in sort of capital expenditures across both public and private sectors, over a twenty-year period, we could save almost seven hundred and eighty million dollars based on the data we were able to put together and the dollar signs that we could add to it. So those two, we're just going to kind of keep going with, that's down that path. But we're adding in two more scenarios that we're going to assess as well. This one called Edge, or Compact Suburban Development, I think acknowledges that not every development in the future will probably be a high-rise in Midtown. And maybe there are better ways to utilize our vacant land, and there are strategies for selecting vacant land that could accommodate large tentative maps or something. But maybe they could be a little denser. Maybe they're in the right spot because they do have the sewer capacity, that sort of thing. But then, of course, we do want to look at an infill-heavy scenario because we do know that preferences are changing. Younger generations are driving, wanting to drive less. They're looking for transit opportunities to get to work. And so we would be remiss if we didn't explore kind of a heavy infill scenario. And of course, none of these futures are actually going to happen. There, this is just a tool to help us to assess impacts. This is a weird slide that I made really late at night because I was working a night. But the point is, is that there are kind of these three dimensions that we're kind of analyzing with the four scenarios. One is how dense will our new developments be? And another is how widely dispersed will they be in our region? And then finally, how much policy change will be required to achieve them? And so you might imagine that scenario three, the Edge scenario, you might have to change zoning. You might have to upzone. That would be a policy change that we would try to implement only from a planner perspective to test the effects. And then, of course, it's community discussion to decide, you know, whether or not we actually do those things as part of the plan update. And so why do we do this? As I mentioned, you know, different patterns have different impacts, right? So we want to look at the future before we try to achieve it and make decisions about it and see if we can get a little head start on understanding what the impacts of one pattern might be versus another. And we're looking at performance metrics such as, you know, vehicle miles traveled per capita, air quality, land utilization, how walkable are things? We don't have the final list of evaluation criteria yet. In fact, I'm still sort of working on the code for the allocation, so it's in process. But that's what we're trying to get so that ultimately, for the regional plan update itself, we'll be able to look at all that exploratory work and come up with our best take, again collectively, on what is the preferred future we want for this region? What's our common vision for what we think would be the best? And have it be based on this sort of analytical and hopefully empirical and objective assessment of these kinds of data. So that's the part that I probably know the most about. Now we're going to get into the gray areas of Jeremy's knowledge of the regional plan update. But one of the ones that I am working on pretty close is the long-run scenario narratives, or as they've been redubbed, the scenaratives, which I think is kind of a fun one. And the reason they're narratives is because they're more qualitative. What I just proposed to you was very technical. We've got all the parcel data zoning. We calculate, we do a bunch of math. But in this case, it's more like, we don't have the budget of like a shell oil company. We don't have the capacity to look at these long-ranging, you know, amazing wide breadth scenarios. So we're going to take a narrative approach where we look at existing research. We try to contextualize it in the Truckee Meadows, right? And just try to look at those four or five kind of future narratives over about a fifty-year time period that may come to pass. So technological advancements. Here, we're talking about the Internet of Things, e-commerce, autonomous vehicles, drone delivery, right, if you believe in that, or whatever it might be. And what effects that might have on our land use pattern. Because that's really where we always want to bring it back, is to land use. Obviously, climate change is a super important issue, and we need to address that. And land use can have an impact and can be impacted by climate change. Like we saw the economic recession, obviously had an impact on growth and development. So we're going to be looking at what that might be. Property tax reform. We've enlisted the aid of some big brains on that one to try to help us to understand, you know, there's, I guess, there's a bill right now going to the legislature that is going to contemplate resetting the assessed value of the home upon sale, right? Because right now, we've had this depreciation problem. We haven't really been getting a lot of revenue from homes. And so we're asking, can we do some calculations and figure out what that might be? How long might it take before we start really benefiting from a change like that? And then finally, build out of the TMSA and FSA lands. TMSA stands for the Truckee Meadows Services Area. That's our sort of twenty-year boundary we would expect to have municipal services. And the FSA is the Future Service Area, which right now is largely development constrained because it's federal lands. But it does have, you know, some potential liability for development, especially in the context of something like the Washoe County Lands Bill, which is being contemplated right now. And some of that land could open up. So we're going to look at what the burden, how many potential units could be realized if stuff like that was turned on. So those are going to be fun, but again, more qualitative because we just don't have a giant shop. Okay, so then moving on to, out of the scenario realm and into policy. There's been quite a bit of policy evaluation. I have not been as active in this side of the update process, but Lauren and Kim from our office have been super active, along with our consultants from Echo Northwest. You guys, I think maybe previously, some of you have met Terry Moore from Echo Northwest. Also, we have on the team Mike McKeever. He was the Executive Director of CACOG over there in Sacramento, where there's like twenty-two different local government entities that participate in a regional planning effort. So he really has a good perspective on how these plans and policies can come together. So he's been a godsend. So we're using expert opinion. We're looking at our existing plan. We're looking at our housing study. We're looking at a sustainability study that we had commissioned. We're looking at our industrial land study that we did and all of the data we've put together. Also looking in the professional literature. So we're really trying to get a, you know, an overall take on how you construct this kind of policy and how you evaluate it. One way we've evaluated is just to count them up, right? So in the four kind of main modules of the existing regional plan, this is the number of policies that need to be negotiated currently. It's a hundred and fifteen policies. And so there's quite a bit to try to dig into. And we've been working closely with staff from City Reno, City Sparks, Washoe County to try to understand which ones, which of these policies get used, which of them get used for conformance, which get used here at the governments. Are there things that are bloated, that we don't need? And are there those policies that we absolutely have to keep because they are really working? So we've been going through this, and what this bar graph is showing you is that of the, you know, for example, in the first column, there were forty-five policies in regional form and pattern. Eleven percent are used all the time. Forty-three percent are used rarely ever. And so this is one way to kind of look at it. It's not the only way to evaluate how important they might be, but it's certainly one step. We've also gone through and looked closely in at those frequently used policies to determine exactly what they are. And I think I can even go to the next slide because this will talk about which ones are being used very low, not very often, maybe which ones are being used a lot? Can we collapse them? Can we remove them? Doesn't need review. And this is all being done in collaboration. We're not just doing this alone in our office. Every Wednesday, just about every Wednesday, we meet with the staff and, you know, from all the jurisdictions, and we talk through stuff like this. So also, we come to the Regional Planning Commission. We'll be doing a retreat in two weeks, right? You guys are, I know you're ready for that. It's going to be exciting. And we just did a retreat with the Regional Planning Governing Board, so we've got the elected officials also, you know, working towards this stuff. We've moved a little further than what I've shown you here tonight because we've actually gone into the kind of regional issues phase where we've gotten buy-in or rather, you know, the opinion of the elected officials. And we did that at the retreats. We'll bring in that to the Regional Planning Commission in two weeks. And then here's our schedule because we got to finish this thing, and we're shooting for March of two thousand nineteen. So now we're calling it the two thousand nineteen Regional Plan Update. We're somewhere in the September zone there, so we're in the development variation. So right now, I'm working on the code to build scenarios and evaluate them. And that will be something that we'll be talking about in two weeks. So that's kind of where we're at. All along that, policy evaluation is happening. We have begun drafting the plan. Several appendices are probably seventy-five to eighty-five percent written already. So we have a lot of it written, and the idea is that we're going to write the appendices kind of first, and then we're going to summarize into those core documents that I was talking about earlier. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have. I'll do my best.
Commissioner Chesney, can I just start down the line and move this way? Commissioner Doncic.
Thank you for that very quick down and dirty, of which I need a magnifying glass to read. Sorry. One of my main concerns, and I did see it on page ten very quickly. How are you gauging what you consider affordable housing? Considering that is a very, very important issue right now.
Absolutely. Well, you may be aware that our agency is currently partnered with Truckee Meadows Healthy Communities Initiative and a national nonprofit called Enterprise Community Partners. And they are engaged in a very robust study that will reveal a strategy for housing affordability for the Truckee Meadows. And they're doing quite a bit of work. We've been feeding them data and information. So those two things are really working to be aligned so that policy in the regional plan will really benefit, or any new policy or policy evolution will benefit from this understanding of methods that have been used elsewhere in the country that have been successful for affordable housing, and what are the impacts or challenges.
So that was my next question. Where was this data being drawn from? Are you going to use sort of a basic study from somewhere else and then take our data and reuse an old study? Are you creating a whole new study? Because some of the concerns for various issues that go on in this county is they take canned studies and put new facts in it and come out with it, and it isn't always the true picture.
Agreed. And it's, you know, I would say it's on the spectrum of both. It's a national firm that's helping us to do the work. And so they do have an approach. They have a tool called Opportunity 360. It makes use of census data by tract. And so we're really looking at census tracts and how they stack up against each other in the region. But we've been in many conversations with them, and we've provided them data that overrides the census data when we have better information available. So we've actually gone through vari- So we've actually gone through variable by variable, actually, and said, you know, it's, it's a, it's an alchemy of all of those things. And then the policy and process part.
Not matching the pay scales for affordability.
Absolutely. Yeah, in any, whenever possible, it's, it's coming from information that we have the best take on here locally. And otherwise, it's probably from the census, which is also locally based and based on survey.
Okay, one more question if I may?
Certainly.
So we're talking about the surveys that you've been putting out. Is that your census, the surveys you've had some of us take?
No, I'm talking about the U.S. Census, the NCSA Census data, yes.
Okay, because my concern with some of the surveys we've done recently is I know I get information on it. I pass it on, but I'm still concerned that we're not getting the volume of percentage of input from the public is just not enough to really be a true factor.
Yeah, quickly to respond to that, I guess a couple of examples of what I mean by local data. From the school district, for, for example, we wouldn't take a, a national average of student-to-teacher ratio. We would get the actual student-to-teacher ratio and then cast that into the census tracts so that we're upgrading the information that they would use with regard to that aspect of their analysis. Or number of units, you know, all the work we've done on modeled units, that kind of stuff.
And if I might add to that, Francine, it drills down to things as, and those of us that are sitting on regional, you know, we've seen this a lot, is that it drills down to how many households are receiving free and reduced lunches, that kind of thing. So, and it, and it, it is drilling to that, to that local level in terms of, and, you know, even in, when we were meeting with the people on its access to housing, you know, affordable housing, to not just creating affordable housing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Herron.
There's a lot of stuff here. You know, planning in my years of experience is, is a gigantic black hole. And it gets to be very academic and esoteric. And implementing something that, I'm not making fun of it. I'm just, you know, the real world says that planning is a black hole. And, and, you know, you, sometimes you don't get anything done out of it. You have a lot of data from census and surveys and, you know, public surveys are, for the most part, are, you know, they're limited because people just don't do it. And, and, you know, I'm very concerned as you go through this planning process that, you know, you really address what we know are some of the problems now. How do we, how do we fix, you know, the wet lake and turn it into a dry lake? Well, how do we fix the infrastructure? Because infrastructure, it seems to me, I've said this before, you know, it lags behind everything. And without that infrastructure, it's really hard to make these other things work. I mean, it's just, it's a monumental task. I, I, I hope that it turns out well.
Thank you. Yeah, me too. I mean, I would say that that is why we are really attempting to capture as much local data as possible about where infrastructure actually is, looking at jurisdictional facility plans and what they're planning to do and where that money would come from.
Yeah, you know, you could probably identify where those problems are right now. You wouldn't have to go a whole lot deeper. I mean, we know where those problems are. How are we going to fix those?
That is also looking at, at impacts, I think.
Sorry.
Yeah, no. You know, it's a team effort. And we're trying to bring the highest level of information we can to the black hole. I understand, I really do.
Anything else, Bill? Commissioner Chesney.
Yeah, Jeremy, I, I like the, the hexagon plan. But physically, how big is a hexagon?
Forty acres.
Four, oh, 40 acres?
Yep, 40 acres.
Well, be damned own one.
You're in a hexagon.
Yeah.
And, you know, even though that, that's mostly a visualization tool and an ease-of-use tool, but really, anytime we have information at the parcel level, that's where we've done all of our, you know, major sort of data scrubbing. It's all bundled up in there.
Yeah, you're going to collect a lot of, a tremendous amount of data on each one of those hexagons. That's, that's.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, I did have some more slides, which I just wanted to keep it brief, but I'll show you those next time.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks, Jeremy.
Sure.
Jeremy, some quick questions. I mean, thank you very much for this. I mean, because, and to my fellow commissioners, you know, Jim was involved with it. I mean, you know, the three of us are heavily, those of us that represent this planning commission to regional have been living this. But I wanted the rest of you to have that experience. Quick, in terms of when you were talking about suitability and you kind of hedged on that word a little bit.
Yeah.
Are, is, is it regional, I mean, is it the, is there an idea afloat to try to put some definition around suitability? Because it means different things to different people. So to layer it in such a way, or, I mean, I don't know if there's a different word, but in terms of, you know, geographic suitability, land suitability, you know, or even just planning suitability, I'm just, and you'll hear more from me on that as we move through this. But just asking if there's a better term or a way to define it.
Certainly in my, I'm working on it as well. And not yet, I don't have one.
Okay, okay. And then, so you, as we toggle over, those of us that are geeky about that kind of stuff, we can toggle over those hexagons and it'll reveal information? I mean, if I just mouse over it or do I have to click on a hexagon?
Oh, well, when we put, we'll put that out online, which is obviously the goal. You'd probably have to click in a hexagon and then it will reveal to you all the different attributes. And they're all normalized so that they can be referenced together. So basically go from zero to 100. And if you see a 100, it's, it's good in that sense versus zero, which would be bad.
And then when you were on the, the issue of terms of just for consideration is when you say that's, you know, like in module four and implementation and that 71% of this stuff is not used.
Or very rarely.
Very rarely. I just would caution some of those things in terms of not to throw them out simply because they're not or rarely used. I mean, you know, and from, in terms of, I know that we tend to be moving away from joint planning agreements, but I also see a lot of strength in joint planning agreements. And so I'm just offering that caution.
Thank you. And that caution also was offered by staff because, basically, just because it's not used. This was a measure of our conformance process.
Doesn't mean it's.
Yeah, it's not used here to, you know, tell someone no before they get to us. So, yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Bruce.
Or yes.
Thank you for your presentation, but I'm the newest newbie, so I'm just trying to absorb.
Okay, no worries.
Commissioner Barnes.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. I was just wondering if you have any preliminary findings or things in these areas like affordable housing and infrastructure and some of the major areas that we've been looking at? Have you come to any preliminary conclusions or are you still working on that?
I would say we're still working on it. The piece that I think is going to lead to the conclusions is the impact assessment. Because my vision is that you run a scenario of the future, right? And it's based on how you want to weight certain things. So how much does wastewater matter in this scenario? Or wastewater, you know, treatment versus how much does the distance to the transit system matter? Maybe it's an infill scenario. So you create that weighting, you allocate the future. And then it's really that next step of measuring the impacts. And then we're going to be able to, I think, to start seeing, I would imagine that each scenario will be really good for some things, but not so great for others, right? And then vice versa. You might run some, another land use pattern and it'll have a differential impact distribution. So I don't really, unfortunately, have any nuggets of truth today. But that's what I'm counting on will give us that empirical basis for those kind of conclusions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from commissioners? Thank you very much, Jeremy.
You're very welcome. Thanks for listening.
Yes, and we'll see you next week.
Yeah, that's right.
Date, I mean, two days, back to back.
Next week or the week after.
Next week.
Next week?
Okay, we are now at item nine, chair and commission items. Item A, future agenda items. Are there any requests from commissioners for future agenda items?
Madam Chair, I have, well, I don't know if it's a future agenda item or a request for information from the SNAP. It could be either way. I was at a meeting recently with Commissioner Herman. And she mentioned that some of the BCC board, county commissioners, were looking at possibility of eliminating some commissions and boards, saying that they didn't think they were necessary anymore. And one of the ones that she kind of thought of was this one. So I'd like to find out if that's really some of, in some, some of their thoughts.
Mr. Edwards.
I just, I'll treat this as a request for a legal opinion on the legal aspect of it.
Because I wasn't sure where.
As far as follow-up on the planning side, Mr. Lloyd, I think, could probably provide information to you offline. But I'll tell you, my answer on the legal side is really easy. The statutes require there to be a planning commission in a county with a population over 100,000. So that's not a possibility that there be no planning commission. Unless a lot of people move out of the county.
I don't think that's going to happen.
And it would be a lot, so.
Well, no.
Thank you. I was at a meeting and she brought up the fact that the commission was looking at eliminating some boards and.
Board of adjustment is optional, but the planning commission is, is not, so.
And if I can just jump in quickly, we, we probably won't have anything to report for, for a while. And it will be up to the county commission. They've asked staff to prepare some, some considerations, some options. But as Nate mentioned, there's, the PC is not going anywhere.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And, okay, I didn't hear any requests for future agenda items. Besides Commissioner Doncheck, any other requests for information from staff? Okay, item 10, legal counsel, directors and legal counsel items, report on previous planning commission items. Mr. Lloyd.
I will have a lot to report next month. This month, nothing to report.
Okay. Legal information and updates.
Nothing in addition to what I already said.
Okay, thank you. We're now at item 11, general public comment. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.